All this meeting to order.
I think it's from Guttenco.
Today is Monday, June 20th, 2016. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It is 7:55. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. Before we all get started, I'm going to ask everyone in council chambers to join me in a moment of silence. The United States and the city of Orlando suffered an unspeakable tragedy on the 12th, and I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims and their families. Clerk Spencer, I ask that you call the roll.
Leader.
Aye. Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy, absent.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. On to Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who has any written communications they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4, public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening, and also out of respect for other folks who may want to speak. We have a sign-in sheet that Clerk Spencer has. When you are identified, we ask that you go over to this microphone over here to my right. Please identify yourself by name as we are recording this, and your address is optional. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. We have two people. I'll start with Dan Druswicki.
And I'll also add that if you head over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, you said Dan who? Mr.?
Druswicki.
Anybody resemble that? Okay. Please, you can correct it when you get to the microphone, sir.
Apologize.
I was going to say, I wasn't going to get up and speak until you got that name right, but you actually did a good job. Good evening, folks. My name is Deandroz Wiki, 620 South York. I wear two hats here tonight. One is an Elmhurst resident, and the other is a firefighter for the city of Elmhurst for almost 23 years now. I am also the president of Elmhurst Firefighters Local 3541, a position I am equally as proud to hold as that of an Elmhurst firefighter. I speak tonight to say that I am fearful the direction this fire department is heading in, fearful as a resident and fearful as a firefighter. I'm fearful that the citizens of Elmhurst are not and will not receive the protection they need from this group of professional firefighters due to cuts in manpower and threats of layoff or privatization, something that anyone with half a brain can tell you has absolutely no place in fire or EMS service. I'm fearful for the junior firefighters of this department, that they are being overworked by being forced back to shift because of your failure to properly maintain in what can be argued by us as an already undermanned fire department in a city that continues to grow. I'm fearful that these junior firefighters will carry the burden that their hard work, their dedication, their disregard for their own safety will be for nothing, as they may be replaced without a thought. I ask you tonight what many before me over the past few months have asked of you, which isn't much at all. Residents, firefighters, nurses, and doctors have asked, hire all the firefighters you've neglected to for over a year now. Give us the powerful lifesaving tool of ALS engines for the citizens of Elmhurst, and strongly reconsider the bad practice of privatization of fire and EMS services. Thank you.
Claude Pargash, 566 West Gladys. On the agenda, we got 617 adopting the new downtown plan. I don't know why we went to the trouble of hiring somebody to come up with a new downtown plan. If you look at the downtown, it doesn't match anything of the existing one. So, spending the money and saying you're going to follow a new downtown plan, I doubt it seriously. Let me do them. You can scratch that one, and the decision is made by the alderman. They're going to tell the people what the downtown's going to look like. We've got an ordinance over here about the right-of-way for a public utility. At first, in Addison, why is the need to have it removed? What's it going to cost? I assume since it's the city bringing it up, it's going to cost me. But why now? Last meeting on the 16th, we had this argument about sprinklers for Han. I can't see why the city just doesn't go back to the engineers that designed the sprinkler system. Why didn't go back to the architect? And since we had a fabulous builder, we should have known better. And the city just finished building a parking lot. I don't care who told them what about eliminating sprinklers. Right now, you may have a contract that says you're going to get parking spaces. Yeah, you'll get the parking spaces eventually, but you don't have them now. It's only part of your contract. He's to turn them over to you in a manner that you can use them. There is an insurance company on the face of the earth would sell you a liability insurance, which a city is required to carry. The guy that owns the apartments is required to carry, and the people that may open businesses have to carry insurance. You couldn't get insurance for it, and he couldn't get insurance for the apartments above. So, it's cost me $200,000 for an error of the architect and the engineers that designed the sprinkler system, but the city stands by and says, oh geez, the residents have to pay for it. In a meeting in the sixth sink, May, I'll listen to it and listen to it again. Personally, I think that's how this council ought to operate. There's no need for meetings. There's no need for committees.
Mr. Pargash, could you wrap up your comments, please?
It makes things go a lot quicker. We'll just let the city manager come up with the ordinances. You guys can waltz in, and you can vote on them. There ain't no need for discussion or committees. If he decides that you need it, you're going to vote for it, even though two aldermen, three aldermen, thought it was illegal, but they voted for it anyway.
That's it. Who signed in?
Okay, that's it for public forum. For those who had an opportunity to sign in, is there anybody at this time who was in our audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet, however still wishes to address council? If so, please raise your hand so you can be identified. I see one. Is there anybody else? Okay. Ms. Wolf, you're up.
Paula Wolf, 444 North Larch. I've been gone, I haven't been to a meeting in four or five months, and I don't think anything's changed. I don't think you guys listen, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, to what the people who put you in those positions want. You're supposed to protect us. You're not supposed to just write a check for what you want done. It's ridiculous. And why should the fire department be asking for help? I believe on the agenda tonight, you're buying a whole bunch of vehicles, scrap a few of them, or all of them, use what you've got. We need fire protection. We need the police department. But it doesn't seem to rank right up there with the other stuff you think we need. Now, I didn't get good internet while I was gone, so I didn't get to watch all the meetings and check the notes, but I feel like I've come back and not much has changed. Now, while I was away, I did get my tax bill, and that changed. And my alderman, Mr. Dunn, Alderman Dunn, you said that Thornton's was going to be really good because it would keep our taxes down. Well, we're stuck with that god-awful gas station, and my taxes went up, and I'm in a house that I can't use fully because I'm afraid to put my basement back together because we don't know if we're going to flood. So, in that respect, I'm going back to the old flooding issue, and it doesn't seem to be on the top of everybody's list. The Park District, the School Board, they seem to have you over a barrel, or just, you know, they don't care about the residents. They're working for their own interests only. And maybe if you got tough with them and said, hey, School Board, give me that million dollars that you didn't fulfill what you were supposed to do. I don't know. We can make comments, and you can listen or not, and you can be bored listening to us, but you want to spend money that you're borrowing. Would you do that if it was in your own home? I've said it before, learn from Washington and learn from Springfield. Rowner was on the news, and he's stuck, and a lot of the people that we're supposed to be paying in this state are in jeopardy. Don't make it happen in Elmhurst. Learn something from it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Announcements? Any announcements from the dais? Seeing no announcements, we'll move on to consent agenda. At this time, is there anyone on the council who wishes to see any item removed from the consent agenda to vote no or provide further comment? Alderman Bram.
6 dot 17.
6 dot 17, okay. Anything else from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.17. Motion to approve consent agenda. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Levin. Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy, absent.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Consent agenda is approved minus item 6.17. On to item 6.17. Clerk Spencer, I ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving an amendment to the official comprehensive plan of the city of Elmhurst to adopt the downtown plan.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, this is an ordinance as a result of a report out of your committee. Any comment?
I believe it's been thoroughly discussed at the last meeting. I'll defer to Alderman Bram, who has pulled it.
Very good. Okay. Alderman Bram, you pulled this.
Yes. No real additional comments. Just to summarize, I think this comprehensive plan borders on draft ordinance versus a visionary document that I deem it should be. I had the opportunity to discuss this or make mention of this when this was in committee discussions. I mentioned it during the report discussions as well. There's way too many what I would deem draft ordinances in this visionary document. The policy decision should be made later. This should just be strictly a visionary document, and that's why I cannot support this version of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Any additional comments? Clerk Spencer, I ask you to call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy, absent.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nays, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda item 6.17 is approved. On to reports and recommendations. Agenda item 7.1, Mayor Morely, that's me. First issue is, let me apologize to the audience. We ran late in executive session. We had a lot of stuff we needed to discuss. We were sensitive to the time, but council had questions that needed answers, so that's the reason why we were in late. Second is, our neighborhood roll calls have started. That's when our police shifts change around 5 o'clock. Is it 5 o'clock, Jim? 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the evenings. Those run until weather permitting, up until early fall. It's a great experience. Allows the neighborhoods and neighbors to meet all the police and folks who are working for them, and those happen weekly. And check the police department webpage for one coming to your neighborhood. The Explore Elmhurst Express trolley is running. It runs through September 18th. And saying that, I also want to give an additional plug for, if you're looking for something to do this summer, we launched our website, our exploreelmhurst.com website about six weeks ago, and it's anything and everything that's happening, arts and culture, parks, et cetera. Please visit elmhurstexpress.com if you want to know what's happening around Elmhurst. And that's it for me. City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. I do have a few things. One of them is on the agenda, and that's the results of the 2016 citizen survey. I will be brief due to time restraints, but I did want to give the council a little flavor for this. We will have a summary document up on the website shortly, but before that, I wanted to give the council this, and we use it annually as part of our, biannually, as a part of our budget planning process as well. So, along as, I'll start with that it's been completed biannually since 1994. It's mailed out to 1,600 residents randomly generated by our water and sewer billing list. This year, we experienced a 40, almost a 41 percent response rate, which is down a little historically, but still considered a very good response for us. The summary document will include historical data from 2006 till now, and we will have results here at City Hall, library, and of course, on the website. Mailing locations, we divide the community into six parts, and you can see on the left how that's divided, and on the right what the response rates are per area as a percentage of the total responses. And then, next slide shows that we do see a decline in responses, and staff has been talking about how do we boost that back up. And what we're going to do is, we're going to work with Elmhurst College. They have a class and a department that works statistically on things like this, and so we think that'd be a good partnership to work with the college to see how we can improve the survey for future years so that we can get our response rate back to, back to those high 40s as we've seen historically. So, some of the questions that we ask, they revolve around all departments. We've included library. We've included the city center. We've included questions about shopping and internet use, and quite frankly, we asked so much that may, that may be one of the downfalls of the survey, is that it's a 16-page survey, and by today's standards, that seems fairly long. So, that is one of the items that we will have, have the class look into. But some of the things I'm going to highlight are the big items, starting with the overall quality of your neighborhood. As you can see, that remains very high in the fair to excellent category, and even high in the good to excellent category, and continues on the incline. And that relates to some of the other items that you'll see in the survey, such as street condition, and trees, and other things like that. We ask a number of questions about departmental duties, and as you can see, still with overall city of Elmhurst operations, that remains high. We did see a little touch down on the good to excellent, and so we will look into that. What I ask the department directors to do is to review each portion of the survey that relates to their department, try to assess why ratings are what they are, and then we can gather together and talk about improvements on that. The next one, this is an interesting one because this will be my third survey since I've been here reviewing, and you can see a dip in physical attributes of the city as budgets fluctuate, and this is certainly one of them, the street maintenance and street condition. As we hit tough times in 2008 and '09, one of the, one of the items that we stretched was street maintenance, and you can see that that, that was recognized by the residents. And last year, we made a significant improvement, or two years ago, we made a significant improvement in the budget to include dollars, and you see the rebound on street maintenance and street condition. We increased street sweeping. So, a number of items that the council included in the budget are reflected here in the survey. Another one that shows that is commuter parking. Obviously, we've increased the parking downtown, and that has freed up some of the spaces. We made a change to the customer-only, so that freed up some spaces. So, generally, the commuter parking is on the rise, and so is city center parking, convenience, and accessibility. This is always an interesting slide in the survey. It may be a little difficult to read up there, but it's the first one, what are the three things you like most about living in Elmhurst? And the top three are the central location and convenience, the quality of life, and the quality of schools. And you can see, those have been the top three for the last five surveys. So, that, that says a lot. In fact, the, the top five don't, don't change much at all. What three things do you like least about living in Elmhurst was the next item, and taxes, which we've heard, and that's not necessarily only city taxes. I'm sure that's the entire tax bill that respondents are mentioning. Stormwater management, and you can see that's a little bit of a decline in the percentage that answered that. Cost of living, traffic congestion, airplane noise. And you can see that those were the, those were the same top five, but they shifted just a little bit from before, and as you go through, you can see that generally, those are the ones that remain in the top. And then, the last item on this page, what do you think will be the three biggest problems Elmhurst will face in the next five years? Of course, property taxes, cost of living, and stormwater management, top three. And this year, stormwater management dropped from number two to number three, so I think the residents recognize we're making some progress on that. And then, you can see the other two, and generally, the, the top, the top two go back and forth a little bit. Always a concern that the council's addressing, and then the other three vary just a little bit. So, as I said, this survey will be up on our website shortly, and we're just tweaking the summary document a little bit more with the finance department so we can get that up, and then there'll be hard copies out here. We use this, as I said, as a tool in developing the 2017 budget, and we'll share it with the library, we'll share it with the Park District, we'll share it with the School District. We'll highlight it in the front porch. As I said, copies will be available. Certainly, I think the council takes this into account as we prepare the budget goals, and as I said, we will be working with Elmhurst College to refine the survey, hoping to increase the response. And then, just very quickly, the 2017 budget schedule. Some information was sent out last week regarding the schedule and the five-year capital improvement plan. So, any, any input that the council members have, the aldermen have, that they want to get to me would be terrific. The only date missing in here is today, the survey results. So, next week, the five-year capital plan is due to the finance department, and then we start down that budget process already. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would answer any questions on this. I do have a couple more items on my update.
Okay. Before he moves on with the remainder of his update, any questions as it relates to our citizen survey and the summary provided? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Grabowski. I appreciate the update, and as you stated, it's been a tradition every other year for many a years, probably many a decades. Just a couple of questions, one of which, you know, the, I don't know what slide number, but on page two of the handout that's before us, maybe it's slide three, of the mailing locations, it does say a percentage on what was returned. Could we have a comparable of what percentage was sent out to each of those areas? Not exact numbers, but a percentage to kind of have an understanding of what, what was returned, but if it was a low amount to one particular area, it wouldn't really impact the overall return percentage? The other question I have is, is this survey online? I know we talked about it, I believe, either one or two budget cycles ago of making the survey online, so it's easily accessible, and it's not as laborious for someone to take pen or pencil to hand and go through the multiple pages. Have we gotten there? And if not, when do we feel that we'll be there, hopefully, if not this time around, next time around?
Yeah. Just one point of clarification, Alderman Bram, because I know we talked about the online thing. You mean, is there an ability to fill it out electronically? Because the choice of who fills it out would still be random.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Yes, the last two surveys have been available electronically. We've seen that increase since the last one, and we continue to work with the IT department to make that simpler and simpler each year.
Have we seen a high percentage of those utilizing it online compared to mailing it back in the old-fashioned way?
I'd have to get you those numbers. I don't have those. It'll certainly be in the summary document that's put out.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for City Manager Grabowski as it relates to the summary of surveys provided? City Manager Grabowski, I'm with your report.
Thank you. Starting tomorrow, there will be a temporary road closure, Addison and Cottage Hill, with the railroad track repairs. That is, starting tomorrow and going through July 1st for track repairs, so everybody should be aware of that. We have put information up on the website about that, along with the detour map that's on there. This is the UP Railroad. We've been working with them for some time to try to make this happen because the tracks there, the crossing is, is pretty bad, so, so they are finally coming in to make those repairs. Last week, Executive Director Rogers and I had a conversation with a staff member from the IDNR. I know that's been something that we've all been looking forward to. It's regarding the Golden Meadows potential IGA, and so we had a very, what I would call, fruitful conversation with that staff member. Director Rogers and I put together some information for him that he needs to send to the National Park Service, because with the grant dollars that were used for this, the National Park Service has to give an okay to this. So, the staff member from IDNR was going to take that and forward it as soon as he could to the National Park Service to get their approval, and then let us know where that is. The idea being that once IDNR gives at least a preliminary approval of our agreement and the structure that we have, that each agency, the city, and the park would then approve the document. So, that is moving forward.
And no, no red flags or hurdles raised in those conversations?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, he was very positive about it. And then, the last item I have is to address the, the water main break issue that we had last Friday. So, early, actually, late Thursday night, early Friday morning, we had a number of water main breaks, and staff was on them immediately, but I want to explain a little, a little bit about how that occurred. So, recently, we, we have been painting the south water tower, and as part of that, we had to do, we do an inspection of the inside because that needs to be painted as well. So, to try to get ahead of this, of the north tower, which is up by Barron's Park, staff wanted to take that, that water tower offline, drain it down, do an inspection, fill it back up, and put it back online. So, Thursday night, we took the water tower offline. We're still not sure if it directly affected the first break, but there was a, a big break on Larch Avenue in the industrial park, big water main break, which caused a drop in pressure. And so, our system then started to compensate for that loss in pressure and started filling the pipes up, and that caused some additional water main breaks. the pipes up, and that caused some additional water main breaks. And then, when those happened, the system, as you move further south, compensated for those, and started filling the system with more water. So by the time we interceded in the, in the system, we had a number of water main breaks, I think we had 11 when, by sunrise, somewhere in that area. So what we did was, we divided our crews into three groups, and then we brought in three contractors to make sure that we could get those water mains done as soon as possible. That was very important. And the way that, that our staff, our public works staff prioritized them was by the amount of water loss and by the number of people that would be affected by turning water off. There were some that we could still run while we fixed others. So they prioritized those, they got on them right away, and as we were repairing them, we, we discovered three more breaks, and so I think we had a total of 14 for the, for the two days, Friday and Saturday. It was very unfortunate, but I really appreciate all the hard work that our public works department put in for that. They worked all the way through Friday until midnight, they then took a break, came back in early Saturday morning, and worked through all day Saturday until midnight to get these repairs done. And some of them had to be shut down, some of them could be fixed under pressure, depended on the size of the pipe and how bad the break was. For any of the breaks, though, where the water pressure dropped below 20 PSI, we typically operated about 52 to 55 PSI. Anything that dropped below 20 PSI, the IEP mandates that we issue a boil order until we can test the water to make sure that there's no bacteria in it. So for a number of those, we did have to issue boil orders. I think a total residents and businesses, or homes and businesses that were affected by boil orders were about 211 customers of about 15,000 or so. I'm happy to say, Paul just reported to me, that the final one came back today, and everything is back online. No one had to boil any water longer than what the testing phase was, so there was no bacteria found in any of the repairs. So we're still looking into exactly what the cause was and how it will be avoided in the future, through pressure release valves and other things like that. But just as another reference point, we, I said we operated about 52 to 55 PSI, the system peaked at 71 PSI, so that'll give you an idea of what happened with the system. So again, all boil orders have been lifted, and I really appreciate all the work that Howard and Paul and his crews, and frankly, Cassandra put in, because I thought she was doing a very nice job of updating the residents every couple of hours with where we were with repairs, to let them know where people were in the priority list, and how quickly that would be done. That is my report.
Okay, any comments or questions, City Manager's report? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the report. I'm just unclear, did the breaks happen when we tried to put that water tower, water tank back online? It sounded like your summary, I guess that's a no. The summary sounded like it was during the process of draining the tank versus refilling the tank. So I guess if you can clarify, which one is it?
I, I don't know exactly the timing of that, I would have to let you know, and I think there'll probably be more conversation at the Public Works Committee on Monday about that. I don't know exactly that timing as to whether it was coming off or going back on.
Okay, the only reason why I ask, because it just seems odd that we're draining a tank and water pressure builds up in our system. I can understand if we were filling up or something, but...
Just to be clear, we didn't drain the tank, we took it offline.
Okay.
We had not drained it.
Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. I'm sorry, any other reports or recommendations from any other elected officials? Seeing none, we will move on. Ordinances. Agenda item eight, Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance providing the declaration of the general prevailing rate of hourly wages for the year 2016 to be paid to laborers, mechanics, and other workers performing construction of the public works within the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, this is a result of a report out of your committee. Any comments?
Just briefly, Your Honor, thank you. There was a report on the consent agenda, 6.16. This is an item that we've typically done without a committee report in the past. City Attorney Storino suggested that we issue a report out of finance on this, so it's there before you tonight. This is required to be an ordinance by 6:30, by June 30th, so that's why we're approving this tonight, suspending the rules and approving this tonight. So that's why we're doing it. One problem is, they went to a new way of facilitating communities reporting wages, and it's taken longer, so we're going to approve the 2015 rates, and when the 2016 rates are actually there, they'll just be kind of blended into this ordinance, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy absent. Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Zappatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Ordinance, agenda item eight, point one, it's approved. Onto other business, any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Palomsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.